One.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board meeting of April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Let the record show that Jeff Dykens was late to the meeting. It is now five thirty-seven. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three signing of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Law Chapter thirty-eight, section twenty, until March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number five zero eight nine four five four four one zero conference ID two zero three, three eight six four nine one pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams with the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on channel eighteen, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as is possible. Okay, folks, sorry about that, uh, being tardy here and getting messed up on my, uh, on my voice here. But anyway, uh, first item of business is to call the, uh, Select Board, uh, to determine a quorum. Uh, Mr. Shell?
Present.
Mr. Matters?
Present.
Mr. De Castro?
Present.
And Shereen, are you here?
No, she's not going to make it tonight.
Okay, okay, and the chair is here, obviously. Okay, next item on our agenda this evening is the minutes from April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. A motion to move the minutes, please.
I will move the minutes.
Second.
Thank you, folks. Any edits? Mr. De Castro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one on page three, in the, um, second paragraph under B, where it says Select Board Member Dean De Castro, in the second line of that paragraph, after the word officer, I'd like to insert comma director. So it would read officer, director, or trust. That's it.
Thank you, Dean. Any other comments, net edit suggestions? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Shell?
So moved. Oh, aye, sorry. I approve.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. De Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. The next item on our, uh, agenda this evening are public announcements and agenda item requests. Any public announcements out there? I'm a little hamstrung, I think, with my, but, but reading of my participants here. So if a hand is raised, hang out. I don't see a hand raised. Yes, Alex.
Yes, I, I have one.
Okay. I don't know who that is yet, but, uh, I'm gonna recognize Alex. I'm gonna recognize Alex first, and then we'll go on. Alex.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, I'd like to notify the public that, um, tax bills are due on May first, which is coming up, um, rather quickly. So, um, taxpayers can make payments either at the Dropbox at five forty-nine Main Street. You can mail them in to five forty-nine. Uh, please do not mail cash, um, checks only. And also, um, online, you can pay online through City Hall Systems. There's a link on our website. And for ACH payments, that is, um, free of charge. There is a charge for credit cards, um, but taxpayers, um, can pay online free of charge with the ACH from your bank account. Also, if you tend to use a bank check, we would suggest that you do that sooner rather than later, um, because the banks tend to, um, and that's when you have a bill pay for, through your bank. Oftentimes, the banks will bundle those payments. So even though the money's been withdrawn from your account, they'll save up a bunch of checks, and sometimes it takes up to ten days, um, for the town to receive them, and we don't want them to be late. So, um, if you have any questions, or if you haven't received a tax bill, please contact the Treasurer's Office at nine four five five one zero eight, and they'd be happy to assist you.
Okay, Alex, thank you very much. Uh, someone's hanging out. I don't see any hands up.
Uh, yes. Yes, this is Dan Young, Chatham.
Hello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you and good evening. Just a real quick public announcement. Three of Chatham's conservation organizations, uh, St. Christopher's Earth Honoring Faith Committee, Chatham Conservation Foundation, and Friends of Trees are sponsoring events celebrating Earth Day and Arbor Day. Some of these events are a walking tour of Chatham's notable trees, a screening of Dr. Seuss's film entitled The Lorax, an oak tree seedling giveaway. All events held here in Chatham run from April twenty-second through April thirtieth and are free of charge. Additional event day and time details are available in the main sheet and also on Chatham Conservation Foundation's website. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Any other announcements? And/or agenda item requests? Anybody on the board? Anybody out there in virtual land? I see no other hands are raised. Okay, so on to our meet of our agenda. Public comments and business agenda this evening. We have, uh, an Arbor Day proclamation. We have the consideration of request for permanent signage on town property, State Park, one-day entertainment license on town property, a request for one-day special permit for wine and malt, Cape Cod Fisherman's Alliance, and a new victular, common victulars license, Sears Point in, in doing, uh, this is Emma Bell's Cafe. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on any of those agenda items this evening? I see here and see no one. Okay. On to our business agenda. The first item is a proclamation of Arbor Day. I believe the Friends of Trees, uh, Shauna, and hopefully someone from the Friends of Trees is here, um, to comment.
Yes, I am.
Yes, please.
Yes, this is Dan Young again, Friends of Trees.
Hi, Dan.
Hello, good evening, and thank you, everyone. By proclamation, and this is Chatham's twelfth, Arbor Day is April twenty-eighth. J. Sterling Morton, who originally proposed Arbor Day and said, quote, "Other holidays repose upon the past. Arbor Day proposes for the future," unquote. So what is Arbor Day? It can be a walk through Chatham's old village to enjoy the trees, or it can be a quiet reflective walk in Cape Gould Park, or Chase Park, or Goose Pond Forest. Or it can be planting a native tree as an act of good stewardship. Or it can be planting a native tree as a way to increase and improve Chatham's urban forests. Or it can be planting a native tree to fill in a gap in your landscape, whether it's residential, commercial, or municipal. Or it can be a day to enjoy a previously planted tree that commemorates an event such as a birthday, an anniversary, a graduation, a personal achievement. Or it can be a day to enjoy a previously planted tree that commemorates a person. Or it can be planting a native tree so, to improve air quality, prevent soil erosion, minimize storm water runoff, or to create habitat for insects, which ultimately benefit and enhance our songbird population. So let's celebrate Arbor Day, and as advocated by J. Sterling Morton, look toward the future, plant a tree, and good things will come of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Well said. This is, uh, you said it was the twelfth year. That's great. Um, love it. Uh, a motion, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move to proclaim Fri- Friday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three as Arbor Day in Chatham, Massachusetts.
Thank you, Mr. De Castro. And Mr. Shell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, we, um, typically, the, historically, the clerk has read the entire proclamation, as I recall. Is that, am I right? I don't wanna give you extra work, Mike, but I think we've always done that.
I, 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 I look to see if the resolution itself was reflected in the recommended, uh, in the recommended, uh, um, motion, but I'll, I'll be happy to read the whole thing. Uh, twenty twenty-three Arbor Day proclamation for the town of Chatham, Massachusetts, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first celebrated with the planning, planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce soil erosion caused by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide wildlife habitat, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal whenever they are planted. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Chatham, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three as Arbor Day in the town of Chatham, Massachusetts. Further, we urge all celebrant, citizens to celebrate Chatham's Arbor Day on April twenty-eight by planting a tree, sitting beneath one, or taking a walk in the woods, or in one of Chatham's beautiful parks, appreciating trees for all they do for us, our town, and our planet.
Excellent. Thank you, Clark Shell. Thank you very much. Okay, we moved and voted for Arbor Day, and, uh, congratulations. Okay, the next item on our agenda is considering a request for permanent signs on town property, Chase Park, Friends of Trees as well. Mr. Young, you still on?
Uh, actually, this is Anne Hasney. I'm here on behalf of Friends of Trees. Um, we're here to request the installation of two interpretive signs at Chase Park, uh, one at Chattock Place and one at Cross Street. And this would be an interpretive sign similar to the other ones that are, you know, around town, to guide people through a QR code to twenty-five unique trees that are planted in the park. And the QR code will direct, uh, direct visitor to our website where they can take a self-guided tour, and also learn more about each of the trees and their benefits to the environment. So these would be permanent, uh, signs, eighteen by twenty-four inches each, and, um, we're seeking your approval to have these installed. We did get unanimous approval from the Parks and Recreation Commission on March thirty-first, um, by the Department of Public Works Director Rob Faly and the other members of the Parks and Rec. So your comments, please?
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, great-looking pictures of Moni and the, and the package that was sent to us, and the signs look great. Any comments from the members of the Select Board? Mr. Matters?
No, I'll make a motion if you want. Um, I move to approve the placement of two permanent public information ground signs on town-owned property in Chase Park.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Any further comment on the request for the signs? Seeing, hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Mr. De Castro?
Aye.
Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well, and, uh, they look great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. And our next item on our agenda is the consideration of a request for one-day entertainment license and sales on town property, uh, on October seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at the Oyster Pond Beach, uh, which is on the water fundraiser. This is, uh, I don't know how many years in a row this is, but they do this every year about this time, or October, I should say. And Joellen Erickson is typically here. There she is. Hi, Joellen. Are you welcome to comment? Welcome. I think. You're there now, yeah?
Great, thank you. I almost had the same trouble you had. Good evening, Mr. Chair and all the Select Board. Thank you again for having us. This is our third year, um, and we're hoping Mother Nature, um, is more agreeable this year, but every time she throws something at us, we still succeed. Last year, we were proudly raised thirty-one thousand dollars for Cap Wellness Collaborative. This year, our twenty twenty-three recipient is capabilities. So we're thrilled to, um, embark on this new year and be in front of you for our request. Um, last year, we did experience weather issues, and we kind of scrambled, and we learned a lot from that. So this year, not only are we asking, um, for your kind consideration in allowing us to have on October seventh down at Oyster Pond, um, the live music, the DJ, the recorded music, and two food trucks, um, in addition to the permission to sell our nonprofit merchandise. We're also asking, in that license, on the same day, if the weather does not agree, and we need to move the event indoors, that we have the opportunity to do that, um, all of those things at the community center, including the two food trucks, which would be parked out at the community center. Um, last year, we pivoted and we were able to have the party at, uh, the Monomoy Middle School. The food trucks were there as well, and it was quite a successful setup in the rain. Um, we also, thinking about the paddle and a Plan B, should October seventh not work out weather-wise, um, we were able to collaborate with, um, and get permission from Parks and Rec to just do the paddle with no pomp and circumstance the following week. Um, and again, we would have the proper EMT Fire Department representation there, along with the Harbor Master, um, to meet all the requirements. So it's a mirror image of last year, um, only adding that caveat should we need a foul weather alternative. And any questions or any other information I could provide, um, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joellen. Appreciate that. Uh, what day of the week, number one? I think it's probably on the weekend, but then what parts, what parts of the community center would you want to, um, participate in or take over, if you will, if, if the weather was inclement?
Thank you for that question. So it's Saturday, October seventh. So we had solicited for the gym, um, and Parks and Recs had left it out. They really can't commit to the gym at this time because they need to see what their fall schedule will look like, and that's something we would have to check back in around July on. But they could give us the third floor. So that was something that was totally doable. The gym was the only in-question space.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I asked the question, because it's very, very, it's a very popular place, and especially on the weekends. Popular every day.
Indeed. Yeah, so they couldn't, I think it was July, that they could, they could have a better inclination of what that schedule looked like. Um, if not the third floor, which could accommodate, I think a hundred fifty is the capacity, which, which should be more than enough. which should be more than enough.
Yep, super, Joellen. Okay. Any other questions or comments for Joellen from the select board?
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So in conversations with Joellen before the meeting, I'm not sure if it was clear for the board to, to also approve an alternate date or a Plan B for inclement weather. So, uh, I just wanna put that out there. If you're comfortable doing that tonight, um, or if you feel that the agenda, um, as it's posted in the warrant was too restrictive, I can always take it to, uh, next week's meeting for, and this is for the approval of the use of the community center for the food trucks and the entertainment license, and also the sale of, sale of their merchandise. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Well, uh, Mr. Shell?
Yeah, I, I mean, that, that actually, I mean, I'm, I'm, I would be fine with wrapping it all up if we can have a clear statement of exactly what the alternatives are. As I look at the motions, we, we have an entertainment permit, uh, we have sales on town property of merchandise, and we have food trucks, and that's all identified to the, the October seventh date, and certainly have no problem with that. I, I take it that we're tacking onto that the possibility of moving that whole operation to the community center third floor with the food trucks in the parking lot of the, um, of the, of, of, of the, uh, community center on the seventh? And then I'm not sure what is the contingency that moves the whole thing to the next weekend?
There would be no pomp and circumstance the next weekend. We had gotten permission just to do a paddle. So the witches will just get out and paddle for fun and for photos, really. But there'll be no food truck, no music, no amp, no nothing.
Okay, so that's the only thing. Okay, well, with that clarification, I, I, I'm, I don't have a problem with that unless there's some, I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm Mr. Castro.
Yeah, so am I. I, I think that the, the subsequent date probably doesn't require a select board approval. That's just the park and rec. I think what we, the contingency we need to put in is the, um, um, use of the community center in the event of inclement weather. We could perhaps tack that on to, um, one of the motions, so. I, I agree with getting it all done tonight.
Yeah, me too. Okay, does someone wanna, uh, someone wanna offer a motion? So I would read this motion, and then say, you know, also contingent on if inclement weather, we can use their granted permission to use the community center third floor, and to have food trucks there as well, um.
Well, we, uh, Jeff, we, there are, I would suggest that we do three separate motions as, as, as suggested in the, in the, in the staff memo.
No, no, I know. I was just asking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Give me.
Yeah, yeah. Someone, please move it, and then we'll, we'll get on here.
All right, I, I, I'll, I'll move to grant a one-day entertainment permit to Joellen Erickson on behalf of Witches on Water, Inc., for Saturday, October seventh, twenty twenty-three, from eleven AM to three PM, for outdoor amplified music and announcements at Oyster Pond Beach and parking lot, to be moved in the event of inclement weather to the community center third floor.
Super. Okay? A motion? Thank you, Mr. Matters. Let's take a vote. Mr. Castro?
Uh, question. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Not to get hypers, I think you're hypersensitive, but do we wanna specify the third floor, or just wouldn't say the community center per guidance of the park and rec? Because I, I believe Joellen mentioned she wanted the gym primarily. If the gym is not available, the third floor is an alternative location. I, I, I would just leave it open for whatever's best for the building, um, so they're not limited.
I'll accept that amendment. To be moved to the community center in the event of inclement weather.
And did you mention the food trucks in there as well? I didn't hear the food trucks.
We're gonna get to food trucks. They're separate motions.
Thank you.
Second. All right. Okay, Dean seconded. Let's take a vote. Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Another motion.
I move to grant Witches on Water, Inc. permission for sales on town property for their nonprofits merchandise, and I don't think we need to amend that. Uh, that covers all town property.
Second.
Uh, yes.
Okay. A motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. One more.
Mr. Chair, I move to grant permission for two food trucks contracted by Witches on Water, Inc. to vend at Oyster Pond on Saturday, October seventh, twenty twenty-three, from eleven AM to three PM. Food trucks must depart the parking lot no later than four PM with the contingency that food trucks may, uh, be, uh, uh, may be moved to the community center parking lot in the event of, um, of inclement we- weather, subject to the same departure time.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Thank you, Mr. Castro. Thank you, Mr. Castro. Okay, a vote, uh, Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you, Joellen. Good luck. Have fun.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Hope you have.
Thank you.
Yeah, better weather.
Oh, fingers crossed. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, our next item on our agenda is the consideration of a request for a one-day special permit for wine and malt beverages only, the Cape Cod Commercial Fisherman's Alliance, fifteen sixty-six Main Street. I don't know if Jen is on the phone. Jen, are you here? Jen Allard?
I am, yes.
Okay, hi, Jen. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. So this is a kind of a standard, uh, a standard, uh, request, uh, it's for what day, what time?
So I'm here on behalf of my client, the Cape Cod Commercial Fisherman's Alliance. It's for their Meet the Fleet, um, series of events, which is taking place. The first one, next Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, it's from five to seven PM at the Alliance Headquarters at fifteen sixty-six Main Street. Uh, these events pair a local fisherman with a chef, and we have a thirty-minute, um, cocktail and hors d'oeuvre hour, um, followed by a presentation with the, the parties involved. And we're seeking a one-day permit, um, to have just beer from Cohog Republic be served in that thirty-minute timeframe.
Super, Jen. Thank you. Uh, any, any questions for Jen? Comments? Okay, seeing none, let's have a motion.
Chairman?
Mr. Castro?
I move to grant a one-day special permit for wine and malt beverages only for Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, from five to seven PM at fifteen sixty-six Main Street, Chatham, to Melissa Sanderson on behalf of the Cape Cod Fisherman's, Commercial Fisherman's Alliance.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Castro. Was there a second? Did I miss it?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Any further comment? Okay, put it to a vote. Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Have fun. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, our last item on our business agenda this evening is the consideration of a request for a new common victulars license, Sears Point, Inc. doing business as Emma Bell's Cafe at a familiar address, sixty-nine Crowell Road. I believe Mr. Coughlin is here this evening. Hello, Shane, how are you?
Good. How are you tonight?
We're, we're, we're good. Uh, so, what's going on?
So, um, sixty-nine Crowell Road, um, I purchased back at the end of, uh, November last year. It's formerly known as the Chatham Bakery and Cafe. Um, we've been closed for a few months. We're doing some work on the interior of the building, and I am preparing to open a new cafe known as Cafe Emma Bell. It's a combination of my two daughters' names. And, um, we are here asking permission for a common vic license, so we can serve, um, food. Um, a quick overview of what we're focusing on currently is we are gonna be switching up things over at the Chatham Bakery, so, um, or I won't be doing any donuts, so I wanted to make that a public comment here. Um, I've been getting a lot of, um, questions about that, and I'm sure someone else will pick up the tradition here in town. Um, first meal period we're gonna really start focusing on is lunch, and that's gonna be a combination of prepared meals, grab-and-go, um, some items that'll be made to order. And, um, I'm also in the process of putting an espresso bar in there, so we'll have a full line of espresso drinks and, um, teas and things like that. Um, we are also in the process of working on, um, an AM menu. Haven't made any firm commitments on that yet. I'm still in the process of developing that, and I am also hoping to be open a little later in the afternoon. I think from a quick service standpoint, a lot of the local, um, shops close between three and four. I'd like to try to push that a little further into the evening, and again, try to, um, see how well we do with, um, prepared foods and prepared meals to, um, pick up. So that's a quick overview. We are still currently under, um, renovations. I'm hoping to wrap all that up within the next two weeks, and then I expect to have, um, a health inspection, and then, um, I, I'd like to be open sometime before Memorial Day. So that's where I'm at, and I have, I'm available if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Shane. That sounds great. Uh, we wish you the best of luck, uh, gotta get open before Memorial Day. That's a plan. Anyway, any questions for Shane? Any comments? Mr. Castro?
I just think this is a great idea, and, uh, I'm really happy that Shane is continuing a foods, a food business, food service at that location. It's been traditional in town. And, uh, so I, I'm gonna move, I move to approve the application for a common victual license, victual license by Shane Coughlin for Emma Bell's Cafe, sixty-nine Crowell Road, Chatham.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Matters. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. We'll take a vote. Mr. Shell?
A very enthusiastic aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Yeah, and with, uh, best wishes, Shane. Aye as well. So good luck.